No call please.
Michael Chandler.
Here.
Kell Crane.
Here.
Jordan Delon.
Here.
Tabitha Denny.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Terry Hodges.
Here.
Dusty Mabel.
Here.
Kenny Smith. Brick Wall. Michael Woodley.
Here.
Mr. Mabel, you ladies prayer.
Yeah, we just think for this day, Lord, just give thanks for your goodness. God help us all as comedians. Together to make right and sound and good decisions.
I'll stand for the flag.
I will declare the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five, approval of the minutes for March 21st as friend of you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
About a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair. Number six, CTS consultant, Mr. Gabe Looney will explain the property tax ratio.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. My name is Gabe Looney. I'm a property assessment consultant with CTS. For those of you that know Ben Rogers, I work with him. The topic we've got tonight is a very important one, especially to the county budgeting process. And we want to touch on it and hopefully provide some information, provide greater insight to the appraisal ratio and equalization process and the impact that it has on your local assessments. I'll start by saying this, I think it's well-known, widespread that real estate has somewhat gone crazy in the state of Tennessee. I think most of you are aware of, we're in a season where we are seeing sale prices greater than we've ever seen before, at least in the last 20, 25 years. There are a lot of contributing factors to that. Who would have ever thought coming out of a worldwide pandemic that we would see the growth in real estate value that we've seen in all of our counties across the state? And as a result of that, we have seen growth, we've seen folks moving from out of state, bringing cash money and who have the ability to pay what local Tennesseans would think would be exorbitant prices for property and still able to put money in their pocket. And with remote work, there are a ton of contributing factors. But as you probably well know, along with the geography and the beauty of the state, we are very taxpayer friendly. We don't have a gift tax, we don't have a death tax, we have one of the lowest property taxes as a state across the country. So those are all factors that draw people to us. So as we talk about equalization of ratio, it is all a function of the reappraisal cycle. So we will talk about reappraisals, we'll talk a lot about the movement of a ratio and what that means and how that affects assessments and ultimately affects your budget. So two years ago, 2021, Van Buren went through their last reappraisal, countywide reappraisal. And as a result of that reappraisal, property values were brought back to what the real estate market was telling us property was worth. Okay? So in theory, the result of a countywide reappraisal, regardless of what county it is, is to bring appraised values back to market. Okay? So if those two numbers are equal, your appraised value or assessment and the market value are the same, if a property is worth $200,000 and it would sell for $200,000, the ratio is one. Okay? State law requires that reappraisals, once a reappraisal is completed, the ratio is one. Okay? That is a requirement by state law. Over time, what happens is the real property value, as a result of that reappraisal, will stay the same. It's locked in. And if you think about your own home values, unless you've initiated some kind of change to the property, you put in a swimming pool, you built an addition, your value is going to stay the same. Now your taxes can change. If the legislative body decides to increase the tax rate, your taxes could increase. But generally speaking, your value on real property is locked in from reappraisal to reappraisal. It's important to understand that concept. That is not true for personal property and public utilities. Let me say that again. Real property is locked in from reappraisal to reappraisal. It's not for personal property or public utilities. They are subject to change year to year. Okay? We'll cross that bridge in just a minute. But as we talk about the ratio, as we explain the ratio process, okay, we're measuring how much the market has changed since the last reappraisal. Okay? So if you owned a piece of property in 2021 and it was appraised at $200,000 and it sold or it would sell for $250,000 today, the ratio would be 80%. 200,000 divided by 250. It's a very basic calculation. That's what gives us the ratio. So if you think about all of the property that sold since 2021, January of 2021 till now, specifically, the properties that have sold in the calendar year 22 were included in a ratio study. So what happens is they take that sampling of sales and the ratios are going to be high and low depending on the sales. There may be some that are in the 60s, some in the 90s. So they look at all the sales data and arrive at what is the average for the county or the median for the county. And that's what determines what the countywide ratio is for Van Buren County. This year, your ratio came in at .7778. Okay? So what that tells us is that properties on average are selling for about 22% more than what they were assessed for in 2021. Okay? So generally, when I speak to groups, they ask, what's going on in the other counties? So this year, the color really looks kind of green, it's yellow on the slide, but the yellow-green looking counties, there were 38 counties across the state that had ratio studies and it changes every year. So there'll be another batch of counties that have ratio studies next year. It's a never-ending process. But this year, there were 37 other counties in addition to Van Buren that had ratio studies. Okay? What did the other counties' ratios look like? And I'm glad you asked and I think you may have a copy of that. And what we see here is Misery Loves Company, okay? Of those 38 counties, 15 of them had a ratio that was in the 70s, 19 had a ratio that was in the 60s, and the remaining four had ratios in the 50s. So that means that their market is, things are selling in those counties for 47 to 50% more than what they're currently assessed for. So understanding that, just to take a look at what your cycle is, you see that in 2021, you had a countywide reappraisal, you had a statutory requirement that got your ratio back to one. In '23, you had a ratio study, your ratio came in at .7778. And this is what you need to know, you're going to have another ratio study in two years, in 2025. We don't know what the market will do. It could stabilize or it could continue to grow. And it's likely that your ratio could be less than 77% in two years. Okay? But what we do know is in '26, you'll have a reappraisal and your values will go back to one. Okay? So whatever the difference is between where the ratio's at today and one is an indicator of how much value increase you'll see in the reappraisal year. So if the assessor were to reappraise next year, you'd have to raise values 23%, 22% to get back to one, in theory. Okay? So the ratio studies are required by law. The Comptroller's Division of Property Assessments is responsible for performing the study and they have to do them at least every two years. So that's why you see that, what you just saw on the previous slide, every other year, you're going to have a ratio or a reappraisal. Okay? So the intent of the ratio, which we've already discussed, is to measure the difference between the appraised value and the market value, how much change there's been since the last reappraisal, to equalize your personal property assessments, to equalize your state-assessed property, which is your public utilities, and then to adjust the effective tax rate of your tax relief properties. Okay? So the one thing that I need to make very clear to you, and this is almost counterintuitive, when you take a real property ratio and equalize personal property or public utilities, it always makes their numbers smaller. Okay? So you're going to take a total value, total assessed value of your personal property and you're going to reduce it 22%. And then you're going to take your public utility assessment and reduce it 22%. So that impacts the total assessed value for the county. If you look at this slide, don't get lost in all of the data. The first column is real property, the middle column is locally assessed personal property, and the column on the right is the public utilities. The bottom two rows are the most important. Okay? Locally assessed real property is reassessed every four, five, or six years depending on what reappraisal cycle you're on. Okay? Equalized during the reappraisal year. Okay? Public, personal property and public utilities are different. It's a self-reporting assessment. They're required, the personal property is required to submit a personal property schedule with an asset list to the assessor by March 1st every year. Okay? So their values are equalized by ratio between the reappraisal, but their values are also reassessed annually. Okay? So their values are changing every year. Same is true for personal property, I'm sorry, for public utilities. They're reassessed annually to the state-assessed, to state-assessed properties in Nashville, and they're also equalized by the ratio. The dilemma here is that if you're a personal property or a public utility owner and your value is being scrutinized every year, you're effectively paying more tax, or you would be effectively be paying more tax than the real property owners are because they're only reassessed, in this case, every five years. Okay? That creates an inequity in valuation. Okay? And the state and the courts have said that, and as you would imagine, those property owners have cried foul, they've said, this is not right. We're paying more tax on the personal property side as a class of property owners and the public utility as a class of property owners than the real property owners are. Okay? So for the last 60 years, this particular issue has been in the courts widespread, as you would imagine. The first 40 years was the actual taxpayers crying, you know, saying that there's an inequity here, we're being unfairly taxed compared to the real property owners. But the last 20 years, it's really been the county government that has taken a stance and said, there's an inequity here, there's something that is, we're seeing ratios like we've never seen before and we have to change the way we thought. But to this point, nothing has changed. And I include this particular statement that comes directly from one of the court rulings. And I find at least a sense of humor in the comment, but it says, "The use of the ratio, sales ratios, may provide the least unsatisfactory method of appraising tangible personal property, but it's the decision, the legislative decision unshackled by constitutional prohibition." So it's not very often that we look for the least unsatisfactory method to do something, the best, worst way to do it. But at this point in time, this is the least unsatisfactory method that we've got before us and it's used to equalize those values of personal property and public utilities. And I know I've thrown a lot at you, but really, what you want to know is the numbers. And this is what it looks like in Van Buren. And this is an estimate based on the numbers where they are tonight in a comparison from '22 to '23. So in column one, we see that you've, on the real property side, you've gained about $4.8 million in growth. Okay? New construction, land that's been subdivided or whatever the case may be on the real property But applying that 77% ratio to your personal property assessments, you're going to lose almost $502,000 in assessed value on personal property. Okay? And on the public utility, it's even more staggering, you're going to lose almost $2.3 million on public utility value. Okay? The good news is, you're still on the plus side. Okay? Because you've got $4.8 million, you see the pressure or the burden that it puts on your real property growth. Because if it were not for that $4.8 million of real property growth, you wouldn't be able to cover the $2.7 million that you're losing, almost $2.8 million that you're losing due to equalization. But the good news is, you're still in the plus, $2 million as of right now. This is worst-case scenario. And speaking with the assessor, there's a few more variables that will play into it that works to the county's benefit. There's still real property to be picked up and prorated that's completed in the next few months, some adjustments to personal property and some growth in public utilities. But this is an indication of the impact that equalization has on your assessments, which ultimately, these are the numbers you do to calculate your penny value. Okay? And in some cases, and I've been contacted by a few counties, they don't have enough real property growth to cover what they're going to lose. So they're going to have to be charged with, we don't want to talk about this, but cutting spending or raising the tax rate. Okay? But you're not in that situation because you've got enough real property growth to cover what you're losing. Okay? That's all I've got, unless there are any questions for me. I'll do my best to answer them and that's my contact information. Lot of stuff in a short amount of time and I know it's feeding you with a water hose, you know, a fire hose, right?
We thank you for coming, we appreciate you taking the time.
Appreciate the information.
Sorry, it's hot in here. Thank you.
Item number seven, approve or disapprove resolution for solid waste tenure plan by Ms. Lisa Luck.
My name is Lisa Luck and I work for the Upper Cumberland Development District and I've been helping Van Buren for a number of years complete their solid waste plan. It is required by law and is through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. And there, the one thing that I need the full commission to approve is the tenure plan. They used to do a tenure plan every 10 years and then update it every five years, but now we update it annually, so you'll see me again next year as we update it again. And then the second part of the report is I'm going to need the solid waste committee to approve the report. And hopefully you have a copy of that report or you receive one via email. I'm going to go through a brief summary of it and answering questions that you may have. And as far as this report goes, y'all will be happy to know that I don't just make it up as I go along. It's all based on the numbers that are generated for solid waste that are tracked by the county and also by the state. And so my job is to compile those numbers and make sure that they're accurate so that when we report, you know, there's no questions as to how you're managing waste. And the state does require the county to manage waste for all their residents. And so that is part of the reason we submit the report is so that the state can see that yes, Van Buren is doing what they're supposed to be doing. And you are. So first of all, the tenure plan. The tenure plan for this year is to relocate the Piney Convenience Center because that one closed. And so there's part of the county that's underserved as far as solid waste. And so that's what we put in the plan, is to update that. And do you want me to ask them to vote or is that somebody else's job?
To vote on the tenure plan, is that what you're saying? To vote on the tenure plan, is that what you're saying? So I guess we need a motion to approve the tenure solid waste plan.
I make a motion to approve.
Here a second. One in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, and moving on to the APR itself. Van Buren provides five convenience centers for residents to dispose of their solid waste. And in addition, you have one green box site left in Sparkman Town. A green box site is just where you have a can set for that community because they are so far away from other convenience centers. The state discourages these green boxes because that, uh, then anybody can dispose of anything in that trash, including hazardous waste, because it's unmanned. So at some point, the state's going to require that that green box site be shut down and other options given to residents for disposal. Van Buren recycles as many materials. So every year, Van Buren and every other county is, they are required to show that they diverted 25% of the waste that they generated in Van Buren. And it's not just county-generated. It's like if you have businesses and they're taking waste to the garbage, it's their accounted also. So if you have 100 tons of solid waste, you've got to show that 25% of that, 25 tons, was recycled or sent to a Class III landfill, or was land applied somewhere, or something like that. And so that's why you count your recycling reports. And, and we did really well this year because Cooper Metals recycled so much metal from Van Buren County, so that, that hit us up to the 30%. So we're good this year as far as recycling. Last year was a real struggle. We were even having them, you know, count bullets out there at the shooting range, which they did. They estimated how many old spent bullets they picked up, and they reported that, that metal to us, so that we were thankful for that. Okay, let's see. I'm not going to go through all these numbers. You've got the whole report there. If there's something that you are confused about or doesn't make sense to you, just call me, send me an email. I'll answer any question you have about this report. And I guess what we need to ask for now is for the Solid Waste Committee members to vote on, to approve the APR as is written so that we can submit it to the state. You can do it now, you can do it later, whatever, whatever you want to do. But we do need to submit the report by the end of the month, for sure.
We will take care of that in our next Committee A solid waste meeting.
That sounds great. That's good. And let's see, the only thing left then, once you approve, we've got the tenure plan, you'll get the, the APR plan. Then we'll have to sign off on it. The chairman will need to sign off online. Hopefully, you've gotten an email from the state to set up the email account. If there's any trouble, I mean, I am, I'm 40, 45 minutes away. Just call me. And Mayor Sullivan, you're going to need to sign off on it, too. But we can talk about that at another time and just stay in touch with me, and we'll get this submitted by the end of the month.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight.
We amended that? Are we going to, let me read the minutes fully, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I fail to do the minutes.
Committee A?
For Committee A there, or to list all three of them there. He has a copy. Does everybody's got a copy of them correct?
While we talk.
Okay.
Can we read off them?
As far as I know.
We need to get three things on the, in the minute.
Three.
Yeah. Because we've got a lot of items that need to be put in. We don't have any, they didn't print us off any. Well, I've got it right here.
You've got it on me, okay.
But nobody else has it. She didn't send it out, I printed. Let me just read off what I got. All right. Committee A meeting was held on March 28, 2023. All members were present. The first order of business was the solid waste truck maintenance and repair. Motion was made by Tabitha Denny to move money from the ARP line item if possible. And if not, to move the 6,0350 from line item 39000 to 55731-336 for repairs for the solid waste truck. It was seconded by Terry Hickey, and all members were in favor. This was brought up and approved in the last full commission. And we just didn't have a line item that night. So we brought it to Committee A so we can get a line item on it. And I think Ms. Tabitha is wanting to see if that money can be pulled out of ARP money.
ARP money rather than, uh,
Rather than, rather than.
I still don't have the answers to that one because the gentleman is not called. I've not been able to get the correct number to call.
So we're still?
Still working on that part.
All right. There's nothing to do with that. Next line item was, or next line of business was maintenance repair for grinder pump. Motion was made by Terry Hickey to approve the 4,500 from line item 39000 to 51800-335 for maintenance repair for grinder pump at the ag center. It was seconded by Terry Hodge, all members in favor. This was, once again, approved in the last full commission, just needed a line item for it. Next line of business was the Health Department line item approval. Motion was made by Terry Hodge to approve the 28,000, yeah, 28,900 from line item 39000 to 55110-399, seconded by Jordan Delon. All members are in favor. Now, we, any word with that? Is that?
Well, they still don't have, you know, that was for the central heat and air.
Right.
And he still don't have it either.
Okay.
We got the money there.
Yeah, the money's there. No, it just needed to be put in a line item for the minutes. And the next line was Farmer's Market Pavilion. Motion was made by Terry Hickey that Van Buren County would not cover any insurance on events at the Farmer's Market Pavilion. The individuals hosting the events should have their own insurance if they want to do so. This was seconded by Terry Hodge, and all members were in favor. Nobody has any questions on that? New business, which is in line item eight of today's full commission business. I'll go ahead and bring it up. Tabitha Denny made a motion to have the solid waste contract hauler fee increased from 3 cents a pound to 9 cents a pound. This will go into the Fund 116 Solid Waste. This was seconded by Terry Hickey. All members are in favor. Is there anything, any change, question? Got to vote on it anyway. It's the private haulers bringing trash into the convenience centers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that, uh, motion to, after doing further evaluations on the budget, at this time, we feel that 6 cents is reasonable. We still may be at a slight loss, but not as severe as before. So I'm going to amend that to 6 cents. And I'll make that in form of a motion.
We need to, um, all of this business that Committee A has done, plus this, will all be covered in that motion. See what I'm saying?
Well, the other is already approved.
Right.
All the other business was approved. We just had to get, put the line items.
Yes, yes.
That was all in the first three. Now, this is the only one that we'll need everybody to vote upon.
We're not going to go back through all of them one by one. That's what I'm saying. It's all going to be covered under this one.
We don't have to, do we, Howard?
It's done, been approved, yes. Okay, and we got a motion on the floor to raise the, uh, to, to cover Committee A and plus, and pre, increase the fee for private haulers of the garbage from 3 cents to 6 cents per pound. Do I hear a second?
Have we thought about the impact this is going to have on the citizens?
Hang on just a minute, hang on. We're going to discuss it, Michael. I need a second, though.
I'll second it.
Very soon. Now then. Any discussion?
Have we thought about what impact this is going to have on the citizens of the county? As far as how much their bills are going to increase?
Citizens' bills will not increase. It's anybody that uses the convenience of another contract.
I understand that. But if you're increasing the people's bill who picks their trash up, they have to pick up the slack from someone.
So whenever we did the figures, we're looking at a loss of approximately $1,500 a month, just in that area. So that's $18,000 a year that we're eating just in that area. And that's not counting, um, the convenience center personnel.
For each area.
That's only, um, the waste, what we pay to have it dumped per ton, the driver, and diesel, correct?
Yes. Just since we've, since we've been in office, correct me if I'm wrong, it's went up the third time to $57 a ton?
Isn't that correct, Lynda?
We've not been in that long.
This is something that we should have been increased before now. Well, I, I can't help it that previous administrations didn't raise it, you know? But, um, it's that, property taxes or something, it's got to go up, so.
It's going to go up again, that's the thing.
And it could possibly go up later, you know, after we do the budget. But my recommendation, and that's why I amended the motion, was for 6 cents so that we are still going to be at a slight loss. However, it'll give us a couple more months to look, but we're not going to be losing 1,500-plus dollars a month. And it's definitely plus because of all the other workers.
More discussion? Go call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Abstain.
Motion carried.
And that's all Committee A had. Chairman.
All right, number nine, Committee B, Mr. Maple.
Committee B met April 13th of 2023. Uh, all members were in attendance except Michael Chandler. First order of business was approve or disapprove setting up industrial board. Uh, motion was made to start the process of setting up industrial board, industrial development board. This will cost, uh, $1,400 or less, is what I was told. A motion was made by Michael Woodley and seconded by Breck Wall. Members were in favor of the motion passed. So what this is, industrial board, is just like we had interest in people buying property or leasing property for the Bitcoin stuff, this industrial board would take, would be the people to go to for that, or any kind of industry, is what I was told. So this is just an approval to start that process because it is a state, it's, it's done by the state, and we got to pay them to start this process. It's not done like a voted through the board, so it's got to be all set up through the state. So that's what this is. We want to go ahead and approve that line item, disapprove, and then go to the next.
The money part, is that what you're saying?
This is Committee B, and it's approve or disapprove. I guess you had to go to the other.
Excuse me, I'm still waiting for the state. The lady that was over there is sick, or has a, had a child sick. And so I've not got definite numbers of what it's going to cost yet.
Okay.
And so that's the reason, I just want to get it implemented, get the process started for the IDB, IDB board. You know what I'm saying? So we can.
We don't know exact prices.
I don't know the exact price. Well, it won't be over 1,000 for the state fees, but if we can file under a different way, then we just have to pay back fees. So I don't know which one's going to be the cheaper way to.
Want to put this off then, till we?
Yeah, I mean, whatever y'all want to do. I was just trying to get it started, so if we.
What do we want to do?
I mean, you need approval tonight to get this.
I mean, it would be good for we can start pay for work, but still, that, that's your choice.
There's five board members?
Yes, there'd be five or seven. Well, we can have the number of them, can't we, Howard?
Can.
And you could even do one with Spencer as a joint, if the person wanted to do that.
You'd have to charter the industrial development board. You have to adopt the charter. And in the charter, you specify the number of members. Charter has to be approved by the state. The first step would be to charter the entity if you want to move forward with it, which is, which is not difficult to do from a legal standpoint.
But we were going to see if we could go by the other charter that we had before, correct? Or the last?
Well, all the members on the other one are, they're out of date. You know what I'm saying? A lot of, some of those have passed away already, so.
Is the charter still valid?
Well, no, no, see, that's what I was trying.
That's what they're supposed to be telling us.
That's what I was trying to find out from her. No, it's, it's run out, but there's one way that you can, they said you can pay the back fees.
You can.
You can pay the back fees and get your, have your charter reinstated, and then name your.
I can find out in just a second when it was, y'all continue discussing. I can probably find out.
We're going to, what he's, what he's saying, I don't know if it's hurting him. It's AR, possibility of our old charter still being in effect, that we can go back and pay our dues and catch them up, and then we'd still, and we'll be ready to go. So we will, uh, hold off on that number eight until we find out if that's, if that's agreeable with the Committee B.
That's fine with me.
Now go to 9B.
All right.
With number nine, could we suspend the minutes for just a second and go to new business for Ms. Rosa Smith? She's here to do, uh, a program on, uh, the daycare up there. That way, everybody that drove so far, they can leave if they need to instead of having to, to wait for us. Because I had issues with, even with the Health Department.
Sullivan asked me to come and actually update you guys on the childcare program. I'm Rosa Smith. I work with Upper Cumberland Development District. And I manage the HUD grant that actually was implemented out to people of interest. Van Buren County was awarded that grant through that application. And we've been doing an environmental review and a Phase 1 ESA to clear all the environment. The good news is everything has been cleared. The State of Tennessee Economic Development has released the funds to start the project. So with that being said, the architect is working on the plans, the specs, to start getting ready to send those out to bid, to get that project started. So, um, but I'm here wanting to answer you all's questions. If you all have questions about the, the childcare, or does everybody know where we stand at, where we're at? How the process is going to work? Or what is your questions? Because I don't want to get too much in the weeds with you guys.
So this is basically a completely new.
So this is basically a completely new commission that had nothing to do with the childcare building before.
So this is the, the one that it?
I know, but we know nothing about it.
You know nothing about it? Oh, okay, okay.
We've been asking multiple questions and have found nothing out, so.
I will try to answer your questions, okay? So I will start back from the beginning. Um, in the Upper Cumberland, there was, uh, an issue brought to legislator about childcare. There's definitely a childcare crisis in the Upper Cumberland. And a grant was given to try to bring people back into the workforce. And we know, in order to get people back into the workforce, we're going to have to provide childcare slots. Um, Van Buren County, uh, does not have any actually licensed daycare from six weeks to five-year-old besides, like, our school systems. Um, so HUD provided, provided a grant out for people that was interested, um, to either, like, renovate their building, expand their facility, buy a facility to incorporate childcare slots. This grant had to be for low-income families, so that childcare would be provided for those low-income families, and actually provide staffing in your area. Van Buren County actually applied for the grant, um, and was awarded the grant. Van Buren County actually was already in the process of renovating a building here in Van Buren County for a childcare project. Um, I do believe that someone was hired, um, a construction company, and to do some renovations, to bring the building up and to restructure it a little bit. But on top of that, because you was awarded a grant, that building was not used for childcare. So at that point in time, we did not want any renovations done because a childcare code and standards are so high that if he went in there and started renovating this building, the architects, the state fire marshals, ECD can come in and say, nope, it's going to be redone. And we didn't want to waste those monies, okay? So that had, that was put on hold until the state fire marshal came out, did a walkthrough to see what was needed for this childcare building. A report was given. It was given also to the architects. The architect says doing the plans. Actually, they're in contact with, I think it's Watson Construction that was actually hired, um, because he can still do the work that y'all hired him to do, and I think some funding was already given to him. He's already purchased material as well. So we don't want to take those funds and actually have another contractor doing the same exact thing, right? So, on, so what we're going to do is separate those plans and specs out. He's going to get the plans and specs that he was already awarded the monies for, and then the plans and specs of the other renovations will be sent out for bid, for, of interest, okay? So we are actually right at that, that line, probably the next two weeks. Uh, those plans and specs are going to be sent to ECD at the state to approve. If they approve those, the architect will be sending this out for bid. So anybody that's interested to actually start doing contracting work on the building, they can respond. We'll probably hold the bid here. I'll be getting with Mayor Sullivan to have that here. In the meantime, part of the application process was Van Buren County owns this building, okay? They would put out a application of interest to the county to see who was interested in running this daycare and directing this daycare. So right now, Van Buren County needs to really think about getting that application process started. What kind of questions you all wanted to implement in that application? If y'all are going to charge rent, is the owner going to be carrying the insurance, if they're going to pay the utilities? Whatever the case may be for that application, because all we know, all, this is all a whole process to get done. If you all wait to submit that application after the building is renovated, it could be another year or so, depending on who's the interest. If they don't have a childcare license, that can take up to a year to get all those licenses. So it is a huge process. Um, so I would say start working on that, decide what you all want to do as far as the, the director, who's going to be responsible for the rent? Who's going to be responsible for utilities, insurance? What are you going to require of that person? Put that in the application and have that interest coming in, and y'all hold those interviews, is what I would recommend to do. So, um, but it's definitely been approved by the state. Environmental was cleared, phase-one ESA, civil engineer was also cleared, so. Does that help at all? I know that's a lot of information. I am so sorry.
So what's the max funding on this?
So what happened is, we, he was actually awarded a grant, and then after the renovations and stuff came in, we went back to ECD to see if we can get some more funding for, for the whole project. So the whole total project was, uh, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, okay? Now, that's, that's going to be all, everything. So what happens is, the county funds was thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents, and that's actually what Watson Construction's bid was to renovate that, what his portion of the building was, okay? So that is the county's responsibility. So with the, the two hundred and thirteen thousand for construction, it's going to be a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that's the thirty-five thousand the county's giving in, a hundred from the grant. The other, uh, monies is for the civil engineer, environmental reviews, architectural designs, publications, so all of the administration fees as well. So what I would suggest is, after the plans and specs comes in, we send those out to bid. Let's see if contractors actually bid on that for, like, the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, if it doesn't happen, then there's a couple of things. We can go back to the architect and say, hey, all the bids that came in is over the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Is there any way that we can minimize and work on going down? And, you know, you may have wanted to renovate four classrooms, but maybe we just need to do two classrooms, and do it in phase one, and then do phase two. Um, so there's a couple different options there, um, but if the county wants to see it go through, then if they have extra fundings to put towards the project, that's definitely could be the case, too. But if it's not, we can actually come and then decide at that point in time, after the plans and bids go out, and see if anybody actually bids on them.
What did Watson bid on his bid? What is under his bid? We ain't seen nothing.
What I was provided from what he bid, because this was prior to the grant, okay? Um, he, the total investment was thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents, and that was actually about five or six things he was going to do in the building.
Can you get a copy of that?
Sure.
So, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, that thirty-five thousand, seven eighty-four has already been paid from, by the previous administration, correct?
As far as I know, it has been.
So Watson's has already been paid for that?
Yes, yes.
It was paid last year sometime, I think.
I called the gentleman, you know, because he hadn't done any work, so I called him, and he said, I cannot finish my work until the architect comes in.
He, he's correct about that, because if he started this work and went in there and done it, and the state fire marshal came out, and then DHS came out, and it wasn't up to childcare standards, it would have to be redone.
Yes, we'd like to know what he's committed to, to do, because we don't have none of that. We.
That'd be awesome. Thank you so much. Yes, y'all can all have a copy of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions that I can help with?
I thank you myself.
It, it's a very helpful week. I was on the, uh, before, and I never, I never heard what you said. You know.
I'm glad I, I was able to help. So I would say the main thing is, is start putting an application together, and let's get a publication out in the paper that y'all are taking interest. Let's see if even anybody's interested in operating a daycare. I think in the past, we had one that was interested that spoke to past administration, um, but we need that application on file, because that's part of the grant application that you all would submit an application, a publication out, and take that interest.
I believe the interest showed three people were interested, but there was nothing on paper, so we'll get that done.
That'd be awesome.
Anybody got anything else for? We really appreciate the info.
Thank you. You're, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
You got some more new business?
Yeah, I've got the, do you want to say on new businesses we're here and then go back to the old?
Yeah. Yeah.
On the new business, ambulance service in, in your packet there, uh, they have got to have three beds, mattresses, things there, I think it's.
Was it three or four?
Seventy-five thousand, fifteen hundred. Fifteen, yes, it's fifteen hundred dollars for the, for the mattresses there.
I thought it was three, wasn't it, Tom?
I thought it was four. Well, no, it says three mattresses and one bed frame.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe they've got one that's still good, but.
This is to replace their old ones.
This is to replace their old ones in, in their ambulance service building.
The ones they have springs coming out of.
Yeah, they've, they've warmed up.
Yeah, springs are.
Any action?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made, motion by Mr. Woodley, uh, second by Mr. Crane. Uh, roll call.
Michael Chandler,
Yes.
Kell Crane,
Yes.
Jordan Delon,
Yes.
Tabitha Denny,
Yes.
Terry Hickey,
Yes.
Terry Hodges,
Yes.
Dusty Maple,
Yes.
Michael Woodley,
Yes.
Motion carried. Anybody want to change your vote? Motion carried. Yeah?
Do we know what line item that's going to come out?
It's right here. It should be a paper there.
We'll make sure it's in the minutes.
That line item, correct?
It is, it's, I just seen it.
Yes, from thirty-nine hundred to fifty-five, one thirty, seven ninety.
Just want to make sure it's in the minutes.
Yes, it's, got it.
Yes.
I just, I'm just wanting to make sure. I want to bring it back up.
You get that, Ms. Carter?
Got it.
I got you. Any other new, any other new?
Then the other thing that I have is for the health department, and I thought we had passed this, but I cannot find no information. I mean, it's, uh, on the state funding, it's ARP money, where the state was going to pass three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and we had to match up to a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred.
Do you know anything about that, Dusty? Yeah, I mean, do you recall anyone's passing that or anything?
Committee B.
I don't recall.
This is just saying we're interested in this, plan to get the ball rolling, that's what this amounts to.
It's to get it rolling, yes, but I thought we'd done passed this three months, because she had come in front of us three different times.
Was it full commission?
You know.
It was full commission when we passed it.
It was full commission, and I thought we passed it, but.
What, in the minutes?
Tonight, I, I was in a hurry trying to find it, and I could not find it in.
I believe that we passed the hundred percent match. We didn't pass the, uh, seventy-five, twenty-five.
She brought up both of them that night, because i- if you'll remember, when, when she was talking, she said, I want to make you under, make sure that you understand that you will have to be up to a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred would be the county's part, if, if we had to spend that much money.
You had to go that far.
You know what I'm saying? And, and that's what I'm basing mine off of, is, was.
We didn't have to be all paid at one time, did it?
No.
It didn't, no. No, that's correct. Yes, and I thought we voted on it, but like I said, now, tonight I couldn't find it. But I did sign a paper, because this has been the most confusing grant I've ever seen in my life. Because every time we talked to her, Melinda can tell you the same thing, she always wanted something different. And so then finally, I signed a paper for, let's see, Thursday, Friday or Monday, saying that we would be interested in, in continuing with this grant, you know what I'm saying, with this project here. And that satisfied her, so.
We will clarify the records. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Wait, are we doing the resolution?
Do what?
It says something down here, need resolution.
It, it was in the resolution to start with on Committee B. That's what she was wanting. Well, after I talked to her later, she says, I don't need the resolution, I just need it saying that you're going to agree to the, this hundred, the three thirty-seven, five hundred, one twelfth match. So.
That was after.
I said, I've been so confused with this.
That one, that one twelve-five is a twenty percent match of that three thirty-seven.
Twenty-five.
It's a twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five.
She did mess up and told us twenty in the budget, but she texted the next day and said it's a twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Can we hold off on doing anything about this and have her come back and discuss it with us again?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to push it to Committee B, let them get their ducks in a row.
Well, it's not their fault.
I know it's not, I know it's not their fault.
They did theirs, and, and like I said, it's, she keeps changing it, so I don't know, to get it clarified.
Just to get it clarified, I'll push it to Committee B, let them meet about it, and then bring it forward.
As far as the budget committee goes, the hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred is not going to come out in one year. It's going to come out in about two to three years.
Because if you don't spend the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, you won't be spending a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred.
But you essentially don't have to spend a dime, is the way I understand it.
Correct.
If, if there's two hundred, if there's two hundred and ninety-five thousand covers it, we don't have to spend any, right?
And, uh, Coke Architect will be at the, uh, Health Department. I, I could, let me verify that, but they're coming to look at the work that's going to be done in the bid, you know what I'm saying, how much it's going to cost.
Good architects.
We got a motion on the floor to take this back to Committee B. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Okay. Uh, now then, what did you find out, Howard?
What I found is that there is not an industrial development corporation of Van Buren County, at least on the records of the Secretary of State that was ever chartered. There is a Van Buren County Development Company that was chartered in October of nineteen seventy-two, dissolved in October of nineteen eighty-four, declared inactive in December of nineteen eighty-seven. There's an industrial development board of Spencer, which is also now, uh, administratively dissolved and inactive, and that took place in twenty seventeen. So unless there's another name for our industrial development board, and I, I used a keyword search, Van Buren, IDB, uh, I just don't find it, but there may be.
No, I think, I think the last one, last one record that I could find when we were trying to run it down was twenty seventeen.
Okay, that was the city of Spencer.
Yes. They switched it from Van Buren County to the city of Spencer, and I don't know why.
I didn't look at the names to see if it had a previous name. I can do that right now. You may be right. You are.
No, not, that's.
So you want to hold off a little while on that, while it looks?
Well, this is something that don't have to be done tonight.
Good.
I mean, I was just trying to get the motion, in case the, the Bitcoin mining was to be interesting, and we would be interested in it. I just wanted to, a board in place, well, we need a board in place anyway, because we got the four acres of land that, that we, we have there, plus with, with the Dunn Steel, there's thirty-three acres right there, that, I mean, it's still county property, and so we need to have people to be the overseer if needed.
Okay, Ms. Coe. Coe?
Sorry.
Last month, I came and presented to you guys, and then I went back to the budget committee last Monday. Uh, if you look at the paper that I handed you before the meeting started, on the second page, the very last figure down there at the bottom, it's on the left-hand side, it says required local match, which is the million eighty-four that we talked about in the county commission meeting last month. But you've got some that's highlighted, so I have some good news for you guys, okay? So in the orange, that's the TESA projected MOE, which we had told you was one point five million, okay? If you look in the green, and it says twenty-one, twenty-two MOE, that's what the county matched last year. So that's the MOE that you have to match this coming year, which is more than what TESA is requiring. So that's a good thing. It's just that you guys, the county commission, the county cannot fall below that two million, fourteen thousand for this school year. So we thought we was going to have to come up with four hundred more thousand dollars, five hundred thousand. Well, that's not the case, okay? Because if the sales tax, the property tax, especially the sales tax and the hotel motel, if it stays up as it has been, you should meet this, if not raise it some, okay? And if you raise it this year, then that's mu, that much more you have to meet next year, just so you understand that, yeah. But that's a good thing. You're not going to have to come up with those additional dollars as of right now, okay?
Thank you.
If y'all have any questions, call her at me. If y'all have any questions, call or at me.
Thank you. You got anything else?
I don't have, well, I gave you a list of road names, but before we vote on it, I'd rather if you hold on to that list and, and let me make sure, you know, with Randy, Mr. Randy Oaks, that, that that would be prompted to, to approve that list. So if you just hang on to that to the next meeting there. It was just for in- information because Mr. Smith had asked for, he'd asked for a speed zone and we can, we can't furnish him that because we don't have it on record. You know what I'm saying, what each road is.
Does this one says 2016, 2017? So is this the last updated?
Well, she run that one off and then that second copy that you have there.
Additional ones?
Is, is additional updated, uh, road names and.
TBA, I guess.
Now, that was the 2017 plus the, the second page there is, uh, the, the nearest roads that has been put on. But let me verify that for him before we do an action.
Does, does anybody of the audience have anything you'd like to say?
Finish your minute. I need to finish my minute.
He needs to finish his minute.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Pardon me.
So the industrial board, do we want to make a motion to put that off?
At this time, let's put that on hold, is that, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, well.
I think you're going to have to, looks to me like you're going to have to re-charter it. I, I don't know if, if it's been dissolved that long. The cheapest thing, it'd be a whole lot cheaper just to do a new charter.
Right.
Charter, I think.
What's that going to cost?
Sorry?
What would that cost?
Uh, it'd cost either 250 or 300 dollars to register it with the secretary of state. And then, of course, all these delinquent registration obligations and finding out if there is corporation number one, number two, uh, it would be all the, all the fees due and the penalties and interest for the failure to file your annual reports. That's where they'll get you. And again, just have to find out, and I can get you that exact amount, but, uh, I'd have to find out what entity's name was used at that time. I looked, uh, Mr. Sullivan suggested, uh, that it may be under city of Spencer. It'd been changed to the city of Spencer. The, the records at the secretary of state's office indicate that that charter was always chartered under the city of Spencer. Didn't start out with Van Buren County. I, I don't know.
But we need one for Van Buren County.
We need one for Van Buren County. I mean, that regardless of, of where bitcoin, i- it's not to, to bring them in. This is just, and Howard, you can tell them that, that it's, it's, it's just a good move on the county's part for anybody that wants to come into the county.
We, we did, we, we had to, uh, uh, reactivate the one in Bledsoe County. So we just did a new one in Bledsoe County in conjunction with the Hubbard expansion, but Hubbard put the feed mill down there. We're up and running on that, having regular meetings now. It's, it's, uh, it's helped us on two or three projects there. Good to have.
Make a motion tonight to add it re-charter?
I make the motion.
Yeah, that's what.
I'll second.
Dusty, you want to make the motion? Because you're chairman of the meeting. Say it one time.
To the floor.
Well, anyway, line nine, you know, committee B approved, this approves. We darn approved it committee B to bring it to the full commission. So do I get a motion to set up new industrial board?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Chandler made the motion, Mr. Woodley cha- seconded it. All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carried. Is that all you got, Dusty?
Uh, I'll read the rest of my minutes off, I'll get back to it. We also discussed, uh, resolution for Van Buren County Health Department. Uh, there's asking for the revolution, resolution, uh, we discussed briefly here. Was asking for a resolution for state funding for a year 2023, 2024. Uh, this is state Tennessee funding ARP money up to 337,500 with Van Buren County matching up to 112,500. Motion was made by Michael Woodley, seconded by Brick Wall, members were in favor, the motion passed. So we very discussed this to table it, to bring it back to commission B, committee B, and we'll get a sound decision made before we come back.
Well, hopefully we can.
Yeah, okay.
No, it's like I said, it's, it's a different change every time.
Right.
And, and I'm not making it up because Melinda can tell you the same thing because every time she'll want, I'll let her head with something, we send that to her, then, then it's, it just totally changes. But yes, we will definitely, we'll meet with you there and try to get it straightened out.
All right. Uh, any new business, the new business we had, uh, I know Mayor Sullivan talked about the roads and stuff. Uh, Kenny Smith brought up our attention, the, uh, lack of some speed limit signs on some roads of Van Buren County. Uh, also look into possible reducing some speed limits on some roads. Main reason behind this was focused on safety. Uh, of course Kenny mentioned he had some roads and, uh, we could get further information from the highway department. And all members, uh, in attendance agree that they would, that we would look into this matter. And that's what we got tonight, is some stuff that we're going to look into and come back to that.
Also, and Howard, you tell, correct me if I'm wrong, during the, the process, I talked to, uh, to him today, not, not to Randy, but to secretary there, and on that, she was saying that if somebody wants a speed limit posted on a road, that you have to get all, all property owners to agree for it to be set at a lower speed, is that correct? And that's something new that I didn't know until she was telling me today that, that all people involved on that road, however long it might be, has got to say it's okay to reduce that speed.
That's what we do on the road I live on.
And they, they're a record of the speed limits and you go through the minutes. I mean, from when I started now, if you want to check a road, then they'll tell you what the speed limit's been set by the commission because normally in a district, people come to you and say, people are flying on my road. I want something done. Then that person gets with, um, B and discusses it, whether to set one, bring it before the commission and it passes, so it automatically goes in the minutes. So it is in the minutes, the different roads that are set by speed limit. By being brought, you know, in commission.
Ask any discussion on that? Uh, that was, uh, meeting was adjourned after that, so I was, uh, in the committee B meeting.
There are something, one, excuse me, one thing I want to mention, as we all know, we've got a group of students going to Oklahoma from, uh, it's 4H. This, this group is from 4H. Joint, 4HFFA, it's four girls and a female sponsor and male sponsor going to Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, I'm Chris, for soil judgment. Uh, some, the cattlemen's association, the soil conservation district, both donated a thousand dollars toward their expense. I wondered if, if we wanted to do something like that to help them on their trip.
I think. My last year's money for my committee money for it already, so.
Yeah, I understand, that's what I started to say. What you think, what you want to do?
What is needed?
Ace, Chris, him not.
It's going to cost about $5,000 to go. Uh, like I said, it's a, it's a joint effort between the 4H and FFA. We've got probably, we've probably got 4,000 or five. I mean, we've got, but the kids are gone regardless, you know, we're going to find money. But we've got about 4,000 in donations so far. And like Mr. Chandler said, he donated, he donated their last act for me. Uh, his, his money that he got from the commission, he just turned around, wrote us a check and we appreciate that, Mr. Chandler.
I'd rather give personally than ask the county to give.
Okay, that's fine, I just, you know, I just want to bring to your atten- your attention. Anybody else got anything, Mr. Rock, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, come right on.
Thank you, guys. Uh, last month's meeting, I'd given you a, uh, Excel spreadsheet that showed, um, the compensatory time that some of the employees had compiled and, um, showed you, um, kind of a plan to move dollars from an existing line into another and asked you to review that. And then you guys wanted me to take that to, uh, committee A and we talked about it in committee A and they said come back at this meeting. Uh, so, um, basically what I'm asking for is just a one-time move and it would be to alleviate the burden, uh, of that, uh, compensatory time that's been accumulated, um, prior to us coming in. And it would be a move of, from the line item in the sheriff's office budget, 54110-106, it would be moving $10,000 out of that line to line number 54210-160. That is an effective move from the, um, sheriff's office deputies line item into the jail line item for corrections officers. Also, it would be moving $900 from line number 54110-106 to line number 54210-149. That $900 move would effectively pay down the, uh, comp time, uh, the excess time for the kitchen staff that had been accumulated prior to us coming in. So effectively, there would be $10,900 moving out of the line, uh, 110106 for the deputies. The largest bucket of that being $10,000 into pay, uh, for comp time that some of the corrections officers had accumulated through the years and $900 to the kitchen. So I'd like to ask you guys to approve that, so we can get that took care of.
I'll make that in a form of a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call. Did you?
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you that I didn't have to read those numbers off.
Get those line items, please.
Yes.
Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aha.